All right, it's now 6:30. We're gonna open the meeting. And so this is a virtual meeting and I'm gonna... Uh, just a second. We're gonna gavel it. There we go. Official gavel. Um, this is my own. We're gonna call the meeting to order and for the public, this is a virtual meeting. And as such, the prayer and pledge of allegiance will be waived. Uh, um, Santos, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Forbes. President. Councilmember Bench. Mayor Protem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer. Councilmember Mellon.
President.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostasch.
Present.
Mayor Klock.
Here.
We have seven members present and two absent.
All right, um, then the, uh, we have no public hearings today. Uh, I believe you've read that we've been told there's no public input. Is that correct?
Mayor, I do have some announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. If there are announcements, I would ask you to do so at this point.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that recycling and yard waste collection has resumed, with service being on regular trash collection day. And the city's compost site is open Monday through Friday at 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And Saturday at 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. Bulk item collection will begin next week. So that's good.
Can I interrupt for a minute, Council?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor.
We are getting some feedback. Could everyone who is not talking have their mic off, please, right now? We'll see if we can avoid the feedback. Thank you. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Reminding everyone that their bill payments can be made online or by using the city's drop box located in the parking lot at the Batford City Hall. But please be sure to post your payment in a sealed envelope. City updates are posted on the city website at www.sagnadashmi.com, posted on the city's Facebook page, and also on SGTV Channel 111. And Mayor, as you stated earlier, we do not have any public input. Therefore, that takes us to room office of tone.
The mayor's on mute.
So Councilmember Ostasch, we start with you. Remember, we have the three-minute limit for everybody. Please, go ahead.
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody, and, um, welcome to everybody who's watching at home to another one of our virtual council meetings. Uh, tomorrow, May 5th, is Cinco de Mayo, so I wanna wish all my Hispanic friends and people in the city a happy Cinco de Mayo. And Mayor, I really don't have a lot. I've just been, uh, thanking everybody who's, uh, I see is on the front lines. There's been a lot here, even talking to some more friends of mine, um, people who are in the hospital, so prayers out to them and thoughts with their families as they struggle through this. I did do some more looking around and, uh, on the state's website, I've been following this all along, so I just wanna share this with the citizens. Um, as of the 4th of May, there was 43,754 cases confirmed, uh, total that have passed away is 4,049. Um, but then also, too, they've been posting the recoveries, and so we've had 15,659 recoveries. So that's about 35% of the total confirmed cases with about 9% of the people that have passed away. So it's kind of an interesting graph that they show out there, too, because there's an epic curve where they're showing like your total cases confirmed to date, and then kind of where we are here, and you can kind of see we've bent it a couple of times. So, uh, thank you to everybody who's been socially distancing and trying to stay at home. And just, I know you miss your families. I miss, uh, my family as well and friends. But something else that, uh, the manager sent out just prior to the meeting that I think this is really good and it shows a pretty good story of our area. I'm gonna share this as well, too. City of Saginaw, as you can see, is real deep ride. We're being hit pretty hard with the charter township out on the side. We've got about 220 confirmed cases in the city and then like 171 out in the township. So please, everybody, if you're shopping, uh, wear a mask. That is the executive order right now from the current governor. Uh, keep your distance in the stores. I know I have been, and then coming home and, you know, washing your hands and cleaning your hands when you come out of the store is just really, really important as we continue to try and bend these curves. So Mayor, that is all I have right now, so I just wanna wish everybody just be well, be safe, and enjoy the sunshine today.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Balls. Mike, your mic, uh, Michael.
There you go. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I really don't have a lot to say this evening either, but, uh, uh, Cinco de Mayo is tomorrow. Um, it's kinda hard to celebrate any type of holidays now with the way, uh, things going right now, but, uh, my prayers are with everybody whose families are suffering from this terrible disease. Uh, I'd like to thank the, uh, citizens and, uh, who reached out to me personally and, uh, asked me about my niece that was sick with the disease. She is getting better. Um, you know, my prayers are with everyone whose families are suffering from this, uh, pandemic. And hopefully, everybody get well soon. I really don't have any much to say. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Councilmember Milne.
Thank you, Mayor Klock. This will be my last electronic meeting with city council. I both hope and expect our next meeting on May 18th to be live, in-person meeting. There are many reasons for this, but there are two with great public importance. Our next meeting begins with the public hearing on the 2020-21 budget. This includes public participation and comment before we vote on the budget. Our electronic meetings have not had anyone sign up for public input. We must invite this input in the strongest possible way for our budget hearing. We have to reengage with the citizens of Saginaw, and this is the perfect starting place. That reengagement also concerns the employees of the city. At a previous meeting, this council expressed its desire to do something to assist with the response to the pandemic. In the coming weeks, our employees will be returning to the job to serve the public in Saginaw. They both will have to master fear and reluctance to engage in ways we haven't for almost two months. This is where we can lead. How can we ask our employees to return if we continue to meet remotely? Two months from today is the 4th of July. I want us to have a fireworks celebration, as we do every summer. I know it will be different, but we can make that happen if it's our stated goal. My hope is this council will join in that effort. And part of that effort has been neighborhood groups like, uh, Austin or Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association. On Saturday, in, in conjunction with their wave event where they all come out and greet their neighbors, they collected deposit bottles and cans for the fireworks. They filled two two-yard trucks full of bottles and cans to fund this fireworks. People wanna see us have a fireworks again this year. I hope we can help in that effort. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Councilmember Scherzer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just, uh, too, I don't have much to say besides, another thank you to all the frontline workers. And I wanna add this week a thank you to our, um, our food service workers as well as those who are deemed essential, not in the hospital field, but those who've been still going to work, um, and making, uh, their livelihood, but also, um, um, making sure that there's things needed in our community. So thank you to all of those workers. Um, I also just wanna send my, um, sincerest hopes for the community as I have for the last few weeks. I've been working from home for, um, about nine weeks now, and even though it's not the greatest, um, to be away from family and to be away from your friends, um, your home is the safest place to be right now. So, um, even as we loosen up the things, I hope our community doesn't lose track and, uh, keeps in sight that even you can be healthy and still have the virus. And there's a lot of things and a lot of, um, symptoms that you may not show signs of, but still working together because it's not just you, um, that you need to think about. It's everybody else. So, um, I am in full, in effect, and enforcing all of the restrictions and, um, adhering to the guidelines. Um, and I just wanna remind everyone is even though it gets warmer and as it starts to loosen, the guidelines start to loosen up, and we get back to work and get things going with full of support of, um, we have to keep in mind that, uh, we're not out of the clear yet. So please, Saginaw, please stay safe. Uh, and the rest of my council members, um, um, I know we are doing what our part in this pandemic. So, um, with that being said, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, next is Mayor Protem Moore.
Good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to thank everybody tuning in. Uh, my week has been, the past two weeks have been nothing but meetings, virtual meetings. Um, I've met with Clarence, the, the president for, uh, National Leagues of Cities. We're trying to get some funds into our city. I also had a conversation today with a senator from Ross City. Stap, Staptin, I think that's how he pronounced it, S.T.A.M.E.S. And he listened to our concerns. There were about five of us on from MML, and we're trying to get some resources. Um, the things I talked about were the things that the city manager gave me. I emphasized revenue, how our revenue was changing with reopening, how unemployment issue was an issue before, and it's still an issue, and it's gonna be a worsening issue. And we talked about the infrastructure. He assured us that he was doing everything in his power and that he was going to get with the other senators. Now, I'm afraid that that happened because we all asked for some money. Not only was it me, it was Battle Creek, Grand Rapids, Westland. It was about five or six of us on the phones, and we just talked about monies that we needed. I really wanna say special prayers out for all of the families lost someone during this time or either just lost them in general. This is really a hard time for a lot of people, especially our elderly and even some of our youth. Just being closed up. Um, I was watching the governor, and I was watching the doctor. She kept emphasizing how important it was for us to keep our mental health together. If you're used to running like I'm running, this is hard, but it's fair. So I do what I have to do. I go out, I come back, and then I'm working in the yard now. Hopefully, hopefully, I can get my yard looking like some of those in the book. Michael, I might need your help. Um, at this point, I just want to encourage all of the citizens. Please, practice social distancing. Even though she is letting up on stuff, that, that means that now we have to really use some common sense. So everybody, please, let's practice common sense. If you don't think you're safe, then maybe you might need to think twice. Um, at the end of the month, on the 28th is when everything will be done. And I'm sure she's gonna reenter, she's gonna start re-entering stuff. But we need to keep in mind that, you know, you only got one life, and we really need to take it slow. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Councilmember Bench. There she is. Appeared. Has she come in? Councilmember Bench? All right, um, in her absence, we move on to Councilmember Forbes.
Good evening. Just wanted to reiterate what some of my fellow council folks have said tonight. Um, as we see the guidelines loosening, it's so important that we don't think that we're already there. We're still a few weeks out, so let's be hopeful that we, you know, there's a length end of the tunnel, but we are not quite there yet, so we need to, you know, to stay the course for now, um, knowing that we're gonna get to, you know, hug our loved ones. We're gonna get to gather in groups and enjoy the summer soon enough, but we are not quite there yet. Um, just a reminder that we should be checking on seniors and our neighbors that we haven't heard from and make sure that they're all set. I went grocery shopping last week and saw way too many seniors doing their own grocery shopping. And I think that, um, that I'm gonna do my best to try to reach out to folks to make sure that, um, if they can avoid it, that they, that they should. Um, and there's also, I mean, as much as it is getting beautiful and we all wanna get out and gather, there are always for us to enjoy the outdoors that don't require us to be in close proximity to folks. Um, we have so many beautiful parks that I've had, um, a little time to enjoy over the past couple weeks, and I, I just encourage us all to get out and enjoy that space um, so that we can remember it when we can gather with our friends once again. Um, I'd also like to send my condolences to Representative Vanessa Guerra on the loss of her grandmother from, uh, from COVID-19. Um, I know that she was very close with her grandma, and it just breaks my heart to think that, um, that this is, uh, uh, this is happening in her family right now. Um, I'd also like to thank the first responders and the medical community, and of course, um, our folks at the grocery stores that are making sure that we are fed. Um, they are doing some tough work out there, um, and I hope that their, uh, that their players are allowing them to stay as safe as possible. Um, just a small, um, update from the Great mural Project. So me and a couple other folks are involved in installing one mural per year. We did one in, um, in downtown our first year and one in Old Town our second year. We're gearing up for our third year. We're really excited to have secured a $15,000 grant from Saginaw Bay Win, which is, um, a group of conservation organizations that fund big, uh, big projects together. So we are working on narrowing down our last two locations, um, to be able to start, uh, painting those, uh, that project this summer. And we're excited to announce that our artist this year is Mark, Mark Petraskey from Mark Arts. He's done a lot of work, um, in Midland and some overpasses, if you've seen them. And then also, he's a teacher at Bay City Western, incredibly talented guy. We're really excited to have him. So as, as we nail down the final details, I will be excited to tell you all. Um, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Council, is Councilmember Williams, uh, uh, online? Councilmember Williams, if you are, uh, turn on your mic, and we'd love to hear from you. Councilmember Williams. Okay, in his absence, uh, I will, I will proceed. Um, I, first, uh, as a follow-up to what our council members have said about the, uh, epidemic, the stay-at-home orders and, uh, the need to be cautious, I wanna remind everyone that this is not the first epidemic we face in this country. It happened not only in this country, but worldwide, I mean, once before, in the second decade of this, of the 20th century, 1918 to 1919. That one went around the world essentially twice. And part of the reason was they didn't have the health, not, the health, uh, system that we have now, but also they weren't practicing the safety techniques that we have now and the social distancing and the, uh, stay-home provisions. If we do those things, as other council members today have mentioned, I think it will not need to go around the world twice. We can cut it off and stop it well before it gets, uh, up steam again and we have a resurgence of the virus. So I concur with everything my fellow council members have said. Please, please be careful. Please stay home. Please protect yourselves and others, uh, around you. Um, I do wanna thank or mention that Cinco de Mayo, being tomorrow, it is, uh, of significance. Even if we cannot have the parade, we can remember it, uh, and, and honor those who, who, uh, it is in memory of. The last thing, uh, this is a little bit lighthearted, uh, some of you will realize today is May 4th. And May 4th, uh, reminds people of "May the Fourth be with you" from the Star Wars saga. So, uh, everyone, "May the Fourth be with you" as we move on today. All right, that's all I have, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, the city clerk did mention that Waste Management will begin a large bulk item pickup next week. And I'm gonna thank, uh, Phil Carwatt, Public Services Director, has been working with the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority to get that started, um, back up, and they did, they did agree to start that next week. I think that's important for our neighborhoods because there are a lot of bulk items out there, and I don't know if, um, the word didn't get out enough or people, uh, weren't complying with that, but hopefully Waste Management can begin to get that cleaned up next week. We'll also have additional employees coming in, uh, this week and next week, and will continue, uh, throughout the month of, uh, May because, uh, uh, the work schedules. We have, um, the services that everybody does see out there, people working, but we have a lot of people, uh, working in the city that you, you may not see very often but have been working, uh, since the stay-home order was initially started. And, uh, some of those people have not been rotating, so we're bringing in more employees to do that work as well. Uh, there has been additional work created from some of the governor's orders as well. You're probably familiar with some of those. Uh, one of them was regarding water service, but what that did is it created a lot of additional work for our Maintenance and Service Division, which are the staff that goes out and turns on water. That order also required for the lines to be replaced. Uh, so those service lines were put to the front, so that crew had to work on that. And it also has a lot of additional record-keeping required, so our staff and customer accounting and Maintenance and Service are doing that as well. So there are a lot of activities going on that people may not think about, but those employees are here working at the city, and more of them are coming in as well. And, um, another activity that we've been doing, uh, all along through this is working on the city budget, and you all received that budget, uh, last week, I believe, and it is available online. Since we knew we're having virtual meetings, uh, Ms. Jones, Yolanda Jones and her, uh, staff, actually Brian Weiss, put together a video, uh, with Matt from SGTV, and that video was, uh, emailed to you, a link to the video, which is our, our usual budget presentation. And it's also aired on SGTV, so the public has had an opportunity to watch that. And, um, with that, we have, uh, Mr. Weiss and Ms. Jones with us this evening, and I wanted to give them a couple minutes just to give you a few bullet points on the budget and make them available in case you have any questions. So I'd ask, uh, Yolanda Jones to make a few comments at this time.
Before you start, uh, Ms. Jones, can I ask a question? Has, did all council members receive the budget and the, the budget presentation?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor. All right, right. Uh, that being the case, then, uh, Ms. Jones, please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Councilmembers, City Manager Morales. I'm just gonna give you, um, a 100,000-mile view of the budget that has been available to you since, um, April 27th, and then the presentation provided to you on, um, April 30th. Um, the citywide budget is projected to be 124.81 million for fiscal year '21. Although the budget is balanced, there are many challenges that the city must face and overcome in order to be in a positive position for the future. One of the largest variables that will affect the fiscal year '21 budget is this COVID-19 pandemic that has affected not only us globally, but, um, the nation, the state, and our local economy. The total of, uh, economic effects of this virus is unknown at this time, and the city will have to closely monitor spending due to a reduction in revenues and unforeseen costs, um, of COVID-related expenses. The lack of revenue have a significant impact, um, on the city and the local businesses. The impact, uh, may drive budgetary decisions going forward. However, um, city administration expects some relief through, um, reimbursements from the federal and state government for incurred expenses. And, um, we are also actively pursuing, um, other resources. So to, let's talk about some factors that are, that affect the, uh, all funds of the city. We have a 2% across-the-board increase as well as longevity increases per the collective bargaining agreement. Um, as stated in the presentation, we have a 3% to 5% increase to active healthcare, 5% increase to the retiree healthcare. We also realize, um, meeting sessions will begin on the budget on May 4th. Okay. Um, there's gonna be a reclassification of existing positions and additions of new positions. Um, we also will see increases to some of the interdepartmental charges as well as increase to principal and interest payments for installment contracts. So I thought tonight that I would go ahead and go through the fund types real quick so that everyone has a clear understanding of what's happening in each of the different fund type. Starting with the general fund, which represents 29% of the citywide budget, um, this fund is approximately 36.27 million, which is a $1.26 million increase. Um, this increase is largely due to an $802,000 increase to police pension, the addition of the marketing division to the Office of General Government, uh, personnel changes such as the inclusion of the firefighter and cemetery's ground administrator that was approved at mid-year, and the reallocation of a few positions as well as the addition of one police officer. Um, the city also realized the appropriation of the PSN grant and the Birch Park overtime details, which were originally realized in the current year. Uh, both of these expenditures, the PSN grant and the Birch Park overtime, will be offset by the additional, um, revenues. Um, also note, our major revenue funds will be affected, uh, state share revenues and income tax. Um, we kept that the same. Um, these revenues may change as we, um, move forward, uh, but we have been involved with various webinars, uh, with the Michigan Municipal League, the State of Michigan, um, CFOs from around the state through our CFO forum with Dr. Eric Scorsone to understand the impact to these revenue sources. We've also been attending the White House briefings to see what kind of monies that would come back to the city. So we are fully, um, on top of, uh, looking at what this impact of this COVID-19 will have on us. The other thing is that we have a very, we're a very healthy general fund, uh, fund balance. So, um, a lot of what's being spoke about, uh, is about how we utilize those funds going forward with this pandemic. Now, taking a look at the special revenue fund, which represents about 18.9% of the citywide budget, this equates to $23.8 million, and this is an overall increase of about 749,000 or 3.3%. This increase is linked to an increase in household rubbish fee from $210 to $220 per household unit. This was a planned increase to the household units because we discussed this at our last year's budget presentation. Although we are projecting a $10 increase to this fee, there will be a higher appropriation of fund balance that will still be needed to balance the fund. We also see the addition of the police justice grant that was added to the budget in the current year, um, and will be recognized in fiscal year '21. In addition, there will be an increase of Saginaw Economic Development revolving loan fund because they expect an increase to loan disbursements. The third type is our, um, enterprise funds, which is also the largest fund for the city, representing 46% of the citywide budget, equating to 57.16 million. And this is a net $2.2 million increase. This increase is largely due to appropriation of $3.2 million for an anticipated bond issuance for the purchase of equipment and various construction projects in the Water, Operation, and Maintenance Fund. Um, to offset this increase, um, will be a reduction to our Sewer Operation and Maintenance Fund by $961,000. This reduction is due to a decrease in the costs and projects across some divisions, including our Maintenance and Service and Debt Service Division. Internal service funds, representing 6.21% of the total citywide budget, equates $7.75 million. And this is an increase of 3.75% from the previous year. Uh, this increase will be largely realized in, um, tech services IS, uh, service, uh, fund for the purchase of a raised floor in the IS department. The GIS fund will increase 11% due to the purchase of software and ongoing programs associated with the GIS projects. They also are very involved with our asset management in our lead copper projects, so, um, those increase, those increases are related to those type of projects. In addition, the public works building will increase roughly 13%, and this is due to the inclusion of, uh, capital outlay for the replacement of overhead doors and the heating system in the garage. Self-insurance fund will increase about $34,000 from the previous year, and this increase is due to an expected increase to insurance rates due to the national markets. The last fund type is our fiduciary funds, and this one represents about 0.03% of the citywide budget, or $34,000, uh, for fiscal year 2021. And this is the same And this is the same as the previous fiscal year. These funds are, they account for, and this is the cemetery's endowment funds, which are legally restricted resources. So 25% of the cemetery revenues collected in the general fund are split and recognized in this fund type. These revenues can only be used for cemetery care purposes in accordance with the city charter. So one of the things that we wanted to do during this review of the budget was also answer any outstanding questions that you might have. We did receive a question from Councilwoman Forbes. And the question was, grant revenues are increasing 47%. Is this because of the justice grant for the police department? Have any decisions been made about how these funds will be utilized? And there, this is a three year renewable grant. To answer that question, the general fund grants will represent 47% increases of 47%. And this is largely due to additional funds received for the state fire protection funding as well as reimbursement Part D and the recognition of the PSN grant in this fiscal year 21. The police justice grant, which consists of the justice technology grant and the justice victim services grant, this is a three year grant that is not renewable. The reason why we are able to acquire these grants is, at this time, is because of our relationship with the Department of Justice. The PSN grant is also a three year grant that could be renewable. And this is a competitive grant and is uncertain whether it can be acquired by the end of the three years. This grant normally is received by larger communities like Chicago and Detroit. The second question is related to block grant dollars. And block grant dollars are tied to population, right? What impact will the 2020 census have on these funds? In response to that, the community development block grants are tied to the population. The impact to the 2020 census is unknown at this time. Should the city realize a decrease in population to be under 50,000, the city may have to compete with other communities for the same dollars. So that's basically the presentation in a nutshell. We're available for questions at this time.
Questions of Yolanda at this time? Any budget questions for Yolanda? Okay, none, we can move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And who? I'm sorry, Mr. Manager?
Just one more thing to add. So we did, in response to this COVID issue, our budget, as Yolanda mentioned, is, the only changes are contractually obligated changes. And we have cut back on some capital items as well because we don't know what that impact is going to be, a financial impact on the city. And outside of the budget, I should have mentioned when I talked about bringing employees back to work, we were able to order additional N95 masks for employees. So we have masks for all the employees who are working. We have hand sanitizer. We have face shields. We have all of those items that are recommended by the CDC. And we are installing shields between some of the workstations if they're not six feet apart. And we're also utilizing additional space in, in city hall that we don't normally use for office space. Jeff Klopsak in Technical Services has a training center in the basement. And that is available if we bring more staff back so that they can be more spread out, be further apart. That's something we've, we've been looking at, all of our office staff throughout this whole pandemic. If they've been working, we have locations where they can separate if that's something that they want to do. So I just wanted to make that clear as well. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall on the website and on SGTV channel 191. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk at this time? Any exceptions? If you have your mic off, make sure you turn it back on. If there are none, then we will ask for a motion to approve the remain, all the items 1 through 9 of 8, 1 through 8 on the consent agenda.
Move. Support.
All right. Madam Clerk, did you get the motion, movement and the secondary?
I did. Thank you.
All right. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there anyone opposed? Please say nay. No opposed, so it passes. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at Boards, Commissions and Committee Reports.
Do we have any boards, commissions or committee reports?
I have, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry. Mayor Protem, yes.
I have met with Region 7. Region 7 is, they are doing a lot of great things. Where Saginaw, I think, was being left out, they're now being added to the pot. There's monies that they're getting ready to put into our city. And they are now trying to work on getting some additional funds to go into the senior citizens' homes so that they can actually, I mean, like the high rises, I'm sorry, the facilities. But they want to actually go in and they want to make sure that all of the workers as well as the patients are secure. So I'm really, really excited about the different things that they're doing at Region 7 now. And so I will keep you posted on the update as soon as they give me the final report.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Councilmember Forbes, we did have a board meeting of STARS. Would you care to enlighten the council about what happened then?
Sure. So basically, so my day job is Director of External Affairs over at STARS. And there's been a lot of actions taken to try to keep folks safe, both on the rider level and for staff as well. Most folks know that we, we had to suspend fixed route services a couple of weeks ago just because it, it wasn't good to have a volume of people on one vehicle. So we're down to Lyft and Express, which are both one driver, one rider services, paratransit. We have a divider set up between the area where the, the driver sits and the, and the rider sits, to try to separate as much as we can. We are requiring our riders to wear masks and we are providing masks as well. We also have gloves in most of our vehicles. We are requiring that they use either gloves or hand sanitizer. And we are providing hand sanitizer in all of our vehicles. We are also, we have waived fares because we want to make sure that people are able to get where they need to go. So we are only allowing essential travel right now. That means medical, jobs or grocery related travel. But it is without a fare at this moment. We're looking at what the future of public transit looks like going forward. And so we're really trying to keep up on best practices around the country and to see the latest from our public health officials to make sure that we're doing things really safely. And we're also just really trying to be available for the community members that need us. So we're doing some food delivery for one of the food giveaways in town. And we're really open to anything else like that. If one has anything in mind, they should go ahead and reach out. But, but anyone can make an appointment a day before the travel that they need. That's essential by calling 907-4000 and making an appointment.
Thank you, Councilmember Forbes. I would point out the board report from the executive directors. We are expecting some federal funds to come out of the COVID-19 Cares Act and subsequent legislation. So hopefully we will be receiving that in the near future. There are some plans to try and obtain some new vehicles with that, particularly aiming for the Rides to Wellness program, but possibly also some for the fixed routes, once we've been able to reinstate that. So there are a number of capital moves that are, will hopefully take place in the near future to try and provide a more stable and better customer, customer service on both the fixed and the Rides to Wellness and other, the other services that are provided by STARS. So those are hopefully coming in the near future. Is there anything else that you would want to add, Councilmember Forbes?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Very good. Does anyone else have any reports from boards or commissions or committees? Anyone else? Hearing none? Madam Clerk, we can move on.
Yes, Mayor, we are now at appointment of board and commission members. We do have one this evening. And it's to approve the mayoral of reappearance of carocotral to the Riverfront Development Commission with a term to expire April 1st of 2025.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the reappearance?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion on the, on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
If anyone's opposed, please say nay. No opposition. It is passed. Madam Clerk, next item.
We are now at miscellaneous business. We do have one item there. And it is a resolution in support of Governor Whitmer's Executive Order 2020-59.
There was a motion made at our last meeting by Councilmember Mayor Protem Moore. And it was seconded to have a resolution prepared and brought before council at this meeting. That is the resolution. Does anyone need any further information on that resolution before we proceed? Hearing none? Is there a motion to approve the resolution that has been presented by staff for approval today?
It's unmoved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, did you pick up the motion and second?
Yes, Mayor, I did. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion on the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make some comment.
Sure, go right ahead.
I did not agree with Governor Whitmer's last extension of the stay home, stay safe order under her previous emergency authority. I did not think it helpful to the city of Saginaw or its citizens. Civic life is not able to be lived effectively in two week segments. The beauty of lifting the stay at home edict is it is not a must reopen your business or return to your previous public behaviors. Each individual will assess their own situation and make the choice best suited to returning to their livelihood. Many small business owners will not immediately open their doors. A restaurant at 25% capacity does not make money, it just loses it more slowly. The same is true for most types of manufacturing, whether the governor chooses to ignore this economic truth or is unaware, doesn't matter. What has become clear in the last few weeks is that political considerations have entered into the decision making process on aspects of the COVID-19 response at the state level. A resolution of support by this body cannot help but be read by some as support of the part, one partisan faction over another. Since we are both by law and practice a nonpartisan body, I suggest we not place ourselves in that position. I will not support passage of this resolution. That's my comments.
Mayor, you're muted.
You, Councilmember Forbes, is there any other, any other comment or discussion on the motion on the table?
Yeah, I have a comment, sir.
All right, go ahead, Councilmember Walls.
I'm in full support of this, of this resolution. A lot of people are dying in the cities all over. And whatever we could do to slow this down is a positive step for all Michiganders. I think the governor is doing the right thing to try to save people lives instead of putting more money in other people's pockets right now. People are getting unemployment more than they normally would get. So the federal government is doing what they should be doing. I think our government is doing the right thing by doing what she's doing. So I just want to speak in support.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? Any other, any other? Hearing none, then we'll call for the vote on the motion. What, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, Council, Madam Clerk, would you pull, do a roll call, please?
I will, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Walls?
Yes.
Councilmember Oss Vesh?
Yes.
Williams is asked. Councilmember Forbes?
Yeah.
Revenge is asked. Councilmember Protem Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Moon?
Opposed.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
We have six ayes and one.
The motion is passed and so the resolution will be forwarded. All right. Is there any other miscellaneous business? Well, first of all, unfinished business, Madam Clerk, there is none that I'm aware of. Is that correct? And the next item?
Would be to adjourn or?
I have a, I have a comment.
All right.
I'd just like to wish all mothers a happy Mother's Day. Even though you may not be with your children on Mother's Day, I won't be with mine. I still wish everybody a happy Mother's Day and stay safe. Stay safe.
Thank you. Any other?
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Is there any other miscellaneous business to come before the board? Any other? Hearing none? Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's unmoved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.